Good afternoon all, I'm Carolyn Rice, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:00 PM on this 15th day of December 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's executive orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7th, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It is the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 PM to prepare for the regular School Board meeting to begin at 6:00 PM. At 5:30, the Board will conclude its informal meeting unless Board members vote to continue the informal meeting until 5:45. The informal session will conclude no later than 5:45 in order to allow the School Board and School Administration to prepare for the regular School Board meeting at 6:00 PM. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please take role and announce those Board members present?
Thank you, Chairwoman Rice. In School Board chambers, we have Chairwoman Rice, Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Mr. Edwards, and Ms. Holtz. And presently attending via Zoom is Ms. Hughes and Ms. Riggs.
And I would like to add to that, Ms. Vice Chair, Mrs. Kimberly Melnick not attending today due to the death of her father. Mrs. Riggs not participating via Zoom due to a family health situation. Mrs. Hughes participating via Zoom due to a health matter. And Mrs. Weems, we expect to be joining in at some point later to be announced. Does that confirm your understanding, Ms.?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on now to our agenda here, beginning with School Board Admin Matters and Reports. And number one, Leadership Interest. This is the typical time of year of the school year where we ask for any members interested in, potential interest in School Board leadership to so state. This is not a forum for commentary today. And again, for the benefit of the general public, these elections are held annually by Virginia Code at our January Organization Meeting, which this year's January 12. And this certainly isn't an end-all today. Any members are still free to reach out after today. So with that, is there anybody present who would like to share? I can start by saying that Mrs. Melnick has expressed an interest in continuing as Vice Chair and that she will be available for outreach at the appropriate time. I'll also add my interest in serving, in continuing to serve as School Board Chair if you would so honor me. It's been quite the challenge for all of us this year, and I'm perfectly available to speak with any of you, you know, on assessing the past year. And there's, you know, chairs always have past precedent, but then there's also the present. And the present this year has been challenging for all of us. I've done my best in terms of our Virginia Beach School Board community, whether on the email front or otherwise, to make everybody feel they have a voice constituents, and to not reveal any personal opinions, but to again, respect the wide range of opinions that have, that continue to be conveyed concerning the school reopening plan. I've done my best to support the work of the committees. I've had to, you know, the relationship with staff changes somewhat as Chair, but I've done my best to respect that relationship, but also to recognize your interest in those And there's no question, the pandemic often strains relations, even among friends on School Board, or between School Board and staff. But I am proud that in the end, I think, you know, that we've tried to exercise the steady leadership that the community looks for from us. And that's about all I have to say today on that. Then I guess, shall we proceed with the next agenda item? So Schedule of Meetings, if you would take a moment, and thank you, Madam Clerk, to pull, it's a single sheet. And again, this is standard for this December meeting as well. This is simply a draft, another responsibility on our part at the January Organization, well, not the Organization Meeting, but by the end of January, we would want to affirm the scheduled dates from January to June. And then what we'll be asking you to take a closer, an even closer look at are the proposed dates for July through December. And my, the commentary I can offer on that is that there's nothing, this pretty much follows the pattern of the second and the fourth month with exceptions that I will so note. You know, we have, as you all know, the January Retreat, and then typically a second meeting. August, September, October, and November all follow the second and fourth pattern. And right now, as this draft reads, there is a proposal for two meetings in December. And to fit into, and have them not be consecutive, they're currently at the first and third week in November as opposed to the second. And then the fourth is winter break, so that's not feasible. So what we're asking the staff and Board Leadership is that you, you know, take a close look at this after today's series of meetings, send any feedback to, and maybe I can put Dr. Bergen on the spot, who should feed back to me and you? Who would like to get the feedback on calendar questions, or to me, and I'll feed them to the staff?
Yeah, I would think it's a Board, I mean, it's a Board issue. I think it should come to you, and then if you need to discuss it with us, we're happy to do that.
And so this would ultimately be an action item on the January...
Yes, Mrs. Manning?
Just a quick question. I had penciled in my calendar here, a School Board Retreat on January 26. Had we made a decision if that was going to be a retreat day, or if that's just going to be a regular Board meeting?
I was thinking that just yesterday, actually. So we will get back, it is still a School Board Meeting Day.
Right.
But we were, I was going to just bring it up again with governance on the intent, because if we do want to do both on the same day.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that was really on our minds back when. We picked it as a Tuesday, and I just don't recall the committee discussion, it's quite a few months ago. We know we have that Monday, the day before, as a backup.
I thought we talked about governance possibly having two days, Monday and Tuesday.
Your microphone's...
I'm sorry.
I thought we discussed that we would possibly have two days, Monday and Tuesday.
Well, it's a valid question, and we will get back to you all on that.
Yeah, that would be great, because that's only a few weeks away, so we really need to have that.
To have the adequate notice, absolutely.
Because I'm looking at my schedule, and I'm not even in town on the 25th, so, thank you.
And again, depending on the feedback, if there's sufficient questions, we can always use our workshop on the 26th for further discussion, but still keeping this as an action item for that. So we still have time here, and I appreciate the added question. Okay? Any other questions on this right now? Wonderful.
Madam Chair, just a reminder, in case folks are looking at this elsewhere, that the special meetings in February on both the current year and the proposed calendars are budget meetings for February and March.
Yes.
It doesn't specifically state that on the...
That we're affirming, right, the first half that we're affirming.
Yeah, it doesn't specifically state that on the fiscal year proposed for 2021, 2022, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. All right, the Committee Assignment Sheet, if you take a moment to pull this out, please. For today's purposes, just want to briefly point out that there was some updating of the document itself, which needs every few years. Specifically, like the Access Foundation is no longer listed because of a change in that organization's bylaws, so we no longer have a, in terms of the outside committees, no longer an official, a formal liaison to that very worthwhile organization that we still will continue to support in any way we can. Green Run Collegiate Charter Board just needed to be repositioned to where it belongs with outside committees. It had originally been listed as a task force, but that's quite dated at this point. Still with outside committees, the Deferred Compensation Board, Mr. Hanziker provided updated language on that. One of the newest Division Standing Committees is on Page 2, the 403B Plan Oversight Committee. And for present Board members, you'll recall, we approved that committee and that charter back in January of this calendar year. And that includes one School Board member, who presently is Mr. Edwards, and so that needed to be added. And so those were among the main adjustments to this. We've noted the positions becoming vacant due to the recent election. At least one other member mentioned a few things to step down from, so that's noted as to be determined. So this is something where, again, we would wait until the Organization Meeting in January to proceed further. But meantime, now, if you would be kind enough to contemplate this and to see what these mid-year adjustments, and direct any interest to our Clerk, Ms. Tonyato, and she'll keep the present leadership informed. And like I said, and again, please feel free to follow up with any other questions about the process, or the form itself, or what's listed and what's not. Okay, and we'll be sure to get these handouts set aside for those not present today as So any other, any questions on the document itself, like I said, any of the changes that were noted, or? We have listed on our, on the agenda here, standing rules affirmed or revised. I think Mrs. Lanetti can help me, that this is in anticipation of the Organization Meeting, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to your bylaws, you every year affirm or revise the standing rules, which are Appendix B. For the, you've seen, we did some changes to these based on things we were doing in both the bylaws and the Protocol Manual. So a lot of the policies you've brought to you in the last couple of weeks, that we brought to you, where we took the awards and moved them over to another bylaw or agenda stuff. It looks like the agenda, it's basically set out how the agenda is, so that if you've seen that part of the appendix, that's the one you're looking at. If you do not make any decision on it, it will roll over to next year, but you do, this is your time to look at. I will note for you, I believe it was just September of this year that we amended that, so you would have looked at that recently.
Okay. Any questions, folks, on that? Thank you for that added information. Right, any admin matter updates from anyone else before we turn this over for our third quarter forecast? All right then, with that, I guess Dr. Spence, you have the next quarterly forecast to introduce to us?
I do, yes, ma'am. And I'll go, I'll go through it quickly. It's on the screen there, and I believe you have a copy. And this is a little bit different than past quarterly forecasts, and I'll just mention, we've only put one workshop topic on each session, and then we've just left a continuing space for the 2021 Plan Updates. And so in order to kind of honor our time together, and since we assume that at least for the foreseeable future, we'll continue to have Plan Updates in terms of where we are and what we're doing relative to dealing with and addressing the pandemic, that we'll only have one topic essentially per workshop other than that. The exception at the moment, and it's a question that I have for the Board, is the first meeting in January. That's the January 12th meeting, and it's the first one on the quarterly forecast. And typically, because it is an organizational meeting, you are electing the Chair, and as you remember, those of you who've been around for a while, I serve as the, I guess, the Chair, I forget the term, but Chair Pro Tem while we wait for you all to elect the Chair, and then I turn it over to you, because you're sort of chairless for the start of that meeting. We typically do not have a workshop. We just go straight into the organizational meeting at the normal formal start time. That, just because that's precedent, doesn't mean that has to be the case. And knowing the situation that we find ourselves in, was the question I wanted to pose is, do you think we should go ahead and plan to schedule a 2021 Plans Update Workshop for the 12th?
Mrs. Manning?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Okay. So I feel that because of the situation that we're in, we certainly do need to have a workshop preceding the formal meeting. And it's my understanding that the current Chair would still be the Chair until we do the election, is that correct?
That's a Cami question for you.
Yeah, I'll clarify. Your bylaws say you have to buy the state law, appoint somebody at your annual meeting for a one-year term. Last year, your annual meeting was January 14th, so January 12th is still within the one-year period.
Perfect.
Additionally, we amended the bylaw earlier this year that the Chair can carry over and handle duties until such time as you appoint somebody. On the offhand, you had to have an emergency meeting or something, but technically this year, you will still be in the one-year period.
Okay. So my suggestion is that I feel that we should plan on a workshop, just because of the situation that we're in with this pandemic, and that's just, I just wanted to say that.
And Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, and I agree. It's going to be a month since we've met last, so I strongly agree that we need to have a workshop.
Is there anyone present or here or via Zoom who has any objection? Okay, then I think you have your answer, Dr. Spence.
Okay, so we'll just, Madam Chair, you and I will remember that when we're doing Agenda Planning tomorrow. So, okay. So again, as a reminder, we typically really only talk about workshop topics during this quarterly review, the rest of it is for you to review. There's an information set, and an action and consent set. And those are what we know today. And some of those were more typical annual and continuing information items and action items that would need to take place. You'll notice, for example, in action, you'd see resolutions that we know tend to come up on an annual basis during certain months of the year. And so I won't go through all of those, but if you do have specific questions, certainly if you'd let us know, because as a reminder, this is the document that we do plan the agenda, the pre-agendas from, create the draft. And we do, as another reminder, we do set the workshop topics based on your feedback here, but also your feedback that we get at the retreat in July. We always talk about this and create our list. And then we've gone over that list with the Governance Committee and affirmed it, and so we are trying to make sure that those topics stay in front of the Board. So for example, on the 26th of January, we have a greenhouse gas emissions update and facilities briefing, bringing you up to date on where we are with our emissions reduction plan, and what's going on with facilities work. On our February 1st meeting on the 9th, that is, as I mentioned earlier, during the affirmation of meetings, pretty much all of the February workshop meetings are going to be devoted to, outside of the Plan Updates, are going to be devoted to the budget process. So you'll see Budget and CIP Workshop Number 1 on the 9th, a special meeting on the 16th for a public hearing and Budget Workshop, a meeting on the 23rd, which would include a Budget CIP Workshop Number 3, and then a special meeting in March for Budget CIP Workshop Number 4, if that's necessary at that time. And then we would be asking for an adoption of the Budget and the Capital Improvement Plan by March 2nd. And again, that timeline is driven by our need to present that to Council in order for them to deliberate and make their decisions by May. And then as we move into the latter part of March there, the March 9th meeting, we are proposing an update on our School Resource Officer Program and some of the ongoing work that's been happening there relative to the MOU that we have. And then also on the 23rd, as you know, we'll begin ramping up for the next legislative set of conversations, and there'll be an overview of the most recent General Assembly with Kemper. So any questions about what's on the quarterly forecast?
For the benefit of our members participating via Zoom, you'll have a better opportunity to follow up with any questions once we can get this information to you all.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
So that brings us up to the Plan Updates portion of the workshop, and we have Dr. Bergen here to speak and to also introduce some special guests, right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mrs. Rice, members of the Board, Dr. Spence. For viewing members of the public, my name is Mark Bergen, I'm Chief of Staff for the School Division, and it's my pleasure to be here with the Board to provide continued updates for you on our efforts to support students and teachers in both in-person and virtual learning. I'm going to begin this presentation, as I typically do, if we can go ahead and advance the slide, please, as I typically do, by reviewing the current health metrics for the Eastern Region to show our trend over the, particularly over the past month. I will be followed by three members of our local advisory panel of physicians. They are seated here in the room behind me. You see Dr. Rowland behind me to my right, Dr. Best, and Dr. Mitchell behind me to my left. And it's my understanding that Dr. Lindsay, the Director for the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, is going to join us via Zoom. Mr. Dennis, you been able to join us yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so we are expecting Dr. Lindsay to be on the call as well. And it is our intent to spend the entire workshop for the physicians to be able to share information with you all, and then engage in Q and A with you right up until the dinner break. Should we find ourselves in a gap of time, Dr. Robertson is prepared, as it says on the slide, to provide updates on the 2021 school year and our planning efforts for 2122, although he is the information item during the School Board Meeting, so if we don't get to Dr. Robertson in workshop, it's okay. He will be presenting that information under, he'll be presenting his information under information. Okay? So these are two screenshots that are going to be looking very familiar to you. I clipped them off of the VDH website last night. The entire graph shows the historical data for this graph, or percent positivity for the Eastern Region since the onset of the pandemic. Listed on the graph to the far right are the percentages over the past month. So at the time of the November 10th Board Meeting, the seven-day percent positivity for the Eastern Region was in our defined yellow zone at 6.4%. Two weeks ago, at the time of your last Board Meeting on the 1st of December, percent positivity had risen to 10%, and it is currently at 10.9%, as reported by the VDH. This is the companion shot of the seven-day rolling average for new cases of COVID-19 in the Eastern Region since the onset of the pandemic. To the far right are the seven-day rolling averages over the past month. So on the 10th of November, the number of new cases in the Eastern Region was in our defined range at 212.4. Two weeks ago, at the 1st of December, the number of new cases had risen into our defined red zone at 379.1, and it is currently being reported on the VDH website at 663 new cases on a seven-day rolling average. And I just wanted to pull this graphic back to the Board. This is, this is a graphic of which we've shared with the Board on a number of occasions, and it displays the guidance that are provided for all School Divisions in the Commonwealth by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Health to assist us in making determinations about when in-person instruction should be considered. Should also be noted that this guidance, as we've shared with the Board previously, is in perfect alignment with the health metrics and the health and safety mitigation strategies that have been published by the CDC. I just want to highlight for you, the box to the far right column labeled "Highest Risk," which occurs when the number of new cases and the percent positivity are both within the red zone, as is currently the case in the Eastern Region. When in the highest risk, the VDOE and the VDH advise School Divisions to adhere to Phase 1 recommendations of the VDOE reopening plan. And accordingly, it's recommended that in-person instruction be limited to students with disabilities, as deemed appropriate by parents and IP teams, and that all other students should be served remotely. However, it's also recommended that plans should be in place to phase back to in-person instruction. And so that's precisely why the Administration has again invited our local panel of physicians to join us this evening, so that we might engage with them and with you in conversation about when and how we might face students back for in-person instruction. And so with that, we'd like to begin by inviting Dr. Rowland to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen, and welcome, Dr. Rowland. Hi, thanks for having me. I should say, welcome back. Yeah, welcome back, I know. I think, I guess maybe the more times I come here, the less nervous I'll be when I show up. We've come a long way since more recess in schools, I'll tell you what. So I also have, and I'm sorry, Dr. Mitchell, you didn't make the slide, but we all know you, so, put him up there too. The phase, stepping off of the phase guidance that he just mentioned, that was at the end of September. So I do think that we have some things to look forward from the state as part of the reopening task force. We're in dialogue with the state VDH, so we'll look ahead as they continue to update. Now, you have to show me how to advance, just, there we go. So what is, what is still remaining true? Mitigation matters. That is still the same, we talked about that from the very beginning. We also, back in July, really felt that kids are less susceptible to acquiring COVID, and that remains the same as well. We also still very much support having a virtual option, and I'm very glad Virginia Beach City Public Schools is continuing to have that choice. Some of my families have spoken, you know, they're not going to take that away, are they? No, they're not. That will continue to be there. And then we all know, and I'm not going to spend as much time on this today as we have in the past, because I think that we can all agree that kids suffer from school closures. I don't think we have to debate that tonight. One point is that masks really do work better than we thought. And I'm really glad that we're masking everyone as well, so that's proven to be a key part of the mitigation. So let's go back to where the CDC, mid-September, you know, talked about the indicators, and we had focused now, you all had indicators in July. So that was before these came out. So let's just pause and look at, we were doing the best that we could mid-July to think about what two factors can we look at? They added a third indicator, which is really, how are you doing? How is your mitigation working? But I want you to focus on, you know, when the core indicators, they have said for a while now, it doesn't mean that the school can't reopen when you're in medium, higher, or highest. And they really talk about even mid-September, if community transmission is high... And they really talk about even mid-September, if community transmission is high, but school and community mitigation strategies are implemented and strictly followed, then the risk within the school as far as transmission within the school decreases. So this was, this was a couple of months ago. You've all seen the Swiss cheese, and I think this has been popping up a lot of places lately, that I would add cohorting students, not having staff meetings, all of that as being partly together. And then another shout-out for masks, because we initially said, "wear a mask to protect other people," but it also, we're finding that it offers some protection for that person wearing the mask as well. And we, as healthcare providers, have known this for a very long time. And some studies are hinting that masks may also reduce the risk of severity if you do contract the disease. And I want to point out this dashboard that the VDH had put out since we last really went into this, too, the K through 12 schools, because we can learn a lot from outbreaks. So I've been watching this over the last few months. Where are these outbreaks happening? I'm just going to take, not to pick on this school, but we're going to look at this school, for instance, and I had gone through several of these, as well as my pediatrician colleagues, looking at where are these outbreaks happening? We really have to consider the context. So, and an outbreak can just, it can be three cases, so, you know, we're not talking 30 people necessarily, but, so you're going to consider, those are the three indicators. So we talk about the two, the percentage of test positivity, as well as the number of new cases. But the, the VDH, when we keep talking about the metrics, keeps reminding me, you know, it's also the ability of the school to implement the mitigation. And this goes to this school in particular right now, when you go to the reopening plan. And this takes a lot of time to do this, because you have to find, track the school down and read what they wrote. Well, this particular one, and it's a common theme that I found, is, you know, you don't have to wear masks, it's just, it's optional. We encourage singing, they actually said this, and I love singing, but it was, you know, really in contrary to all of the things that we're recommending. And this goes to the fact that if too many layers of mitigation are compromised, then transmission is easier to happen within the school when the community levels are high. So, we've been very impressed, in general, with the K through 12 schools, that, that really the outbreaks are only being seen where the holes of the mitigation are too high. So let's look at what we've learned about susceptibility and infectiousness, because they're really two different things. So susceptibility is, is your risk of acquiring the illness. And then the other thing is infectiousness. So initially, when we first looked at this in March, we were treating, we were approaching COVID like we do flu, and we know influenza is spread, you know, among kids. I mean, we always think about little kids, you know, just spreading everything, right? And so, but this is really different, especially with the little kids, because they're less likely to acquire it, and they're less likely to spread it. And so when children are poor catchers and slight spreaders, the schools aren't hotspots of transmission. They reflect what's going on in the community. And that's, that's extremely important when we consider the opening of schools. So looking at transmission, this is just one study, there's a bunch out there, but, but this is looking at, so, in, in the household, because that's important for our kids, you know, we want to, for high-risk families, want to keep their kids in virtual, that is their choice, but, you know, just trying to keep the risk down in households. This particular meta-analysis showed that only 4% of the clusters were identified as having an index case. That means that it started with a child. So, in general, it's the adults that are, that are spreading it. It's the adults that are giving to the, to the kids, not the other way around. And this is important, because we, when we think of a child, we think of, of a contagious little one, and, and so this, this piece is important. There was just a JAMA review that came out yesterday, so talk about trying to keep up with all of this, but it, it showed similar patterns. So I would say, in general, when you look at all of the transmission data, in general, it's anywhere between 5 to as high as 16% as far as the child starting it in the home. And especially if you know that the child is not as likely to get it, and is not as likely to, they're not as likely to be spreading it around. So, data in general has suggested that kids are not the drivers of the household transmission. It's the grown-ups who are spreading it around the house. We're still learning about this, but it's, it's held true from the beginning. So, another one's susceptibility, especially for kids younger than 10, it's, it's just holding true to be lower. So, let's look in general around the nation, you know, because we can, we had this data in July, international data, and that's why a lot of the schools around the world didn't stay closed during their second phase. They stayed open. But we're America, we know that we're different in a lot of ways. And so, let's, let's look at around our country, what has, what has happened. So in general, we have found something that's very important, community rates drive school rates. What that means is, if, and a rate is, is a case coming into the school, so it's not spread, which is very different, right? So if you have a child who's at home, and, and they get it, well, they stay at home, and that's, that's a case that doesn't come into the school. But a case coming into the school, as long as it doesn't spread, is, is just, you know, the rate in the school, if that makes sense. You guys have got to write down questions, ask me later. So, but it's a very distinctive thing, because sometimes people think rates in schools are high, and they think it's spreading in the school, but it's, it's separate. So in-school, transmission is low, and that is holding to be true when schools are mitigating. So this is from, just one of the, you know, you're going to get a lot of things forwarded to you through email, but this one, Emily Ossler is collecting a lot of data from around the country. Hundreds of thousands of schools are reporting to her, and she's an economist. Economists are really good at managing data and trying to stay objective on things. And, and she's finding, schools are not major spreaders. In this, in the corner, the ABC Science Collaborative, this is a Duke slide that I will acknowledge. So, these are other major medical centers who are following her data as well. So the school environment is different than the community, in that in the school, you can get them to wear masks, and I know nothing is perfect, this is why there are little layers, but in the school, you can control the environment more than you can in the community in many ways. So it's the effective implementation of the mitigation strategies that cut admission. We can really learn a lot from our kids in that way. I think the next graphs are very helpful to look at. This is Ossler's data of New York State. And the case rates among the elementary and middle school students actually were found to be lower than the rate in the overall community, because the kids weren't being, she surmises, the kids weren't being bounced around from location to location. The school staff and the high school students followed the community rate. What this tells us is that schools are not areas of spread, schools are not driving the transmission. And this goes, this is important, too, to look at our Black and Latino families, and, you know, there's, these are the groups that we, you know, we really need to pay attention to, and so they're, have similar patterns, although higher infectious rates in general because of, of the structural discrimination in our society, too. So looking at the, the Policy Lab from Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, they had school guidance issued early this summer. And this, they updated it in November, and I feel that this, I didn't want to, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel here, we can really learn from our, our partners who are researching this. And they said, their revision, they've updated their recommendations, "we have intentionally moved beyond the absolutism of case incidence and test positivity thresholds." These were helpful for us knowing when to open. You know, we wanted to open when there were more unknowns, we had the international data, but not as much data as we knew now. We wanted to open in a smart fashion, and so, so we used those two, but, but now, they're not the most pressing questions. And so they suggest that there's different questions to drive our decision-making on when to go to virtual learning for those who have opted for face-to-face. And this is what I've been touching on, and I'm glad you have a copy, because I'm going through these pretty fast, but the first piece is, you know, the mitigation, the collaboration with being able to do the contact tracing, looking at the community. We still have to look at the community. I mean, if all of our elective surgeries in Hampton Roads were shut down, you know, we need to be paying attention, so I'm not saying to ignore these things, but we need to be aware. In-class transmission rates, increasing in-class transmission, and in who's prioritized for learning. So I just sort of summarized that, since I ran through it fast. Okay. So, let's look at experience in other states. We can start with Massachusetts, and I won't read this to you, but basically, they've said that we really need to prioritize, and these were states that were really being extremely cautious, that, you know, banned Virginia from visiting this summer because we were higher than they were, and you couldn't go visit there. So I'm not going to talk as much about Georgia and Florida as I am about the states that were really, really watching this closely. But they, they have taken this stance, you know, if there's suspected in-school transmission, then the classrooms or schools, then they should go to, to remote learning, and then reopen after the mitigation has been fixed. So, their approach is, all right, you know, we've done well, let's stay open across all of the rainbow, if we can, and do, if we can do our mitigation well. And then, we look at Maine, these are some quotes, you know, they're saying, I, I pulled this one, because I remember Dr. Spence and I talking about, you know, we don't want to open in a wildfire, nobody did, and, and so, you know, but, but they're finding, wow, you know, this isn't, this isn't due to school-based transmission, it's community-based. And schools, closing schools doesn't do any good if the community isn't also locked down. There's no added benefit to closing schools. And as I went through the different states, too many words on this slide, I broke it. I don't know. Where do I aim it? I think you'll have to advance me. Experience in other states. Now, this is from New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts. So I spared you about 30 slides. Anyway, I'm going to read it to you, because I feel it's very important. Medical research, as well as the data from northeastern states, and from across the country, and from around the world, make clear that in-person learning is safe when the appropriate protections are in place, even in communities with high transmission rates. In-person learning is the best possible scenario for children, especially those with special needs and from low-income families. There's also growing evidence that the more time children spend out of school increases the risk of mental health harm and affects their ability to truly learn. So this is quite a consensus statement from a lot of people that are also looking at the data, talking to their state health departments, and really wanting to do the best thing to keep our staff and our kids safe. And then, we all know, Dr. Fauci. So, I think you probably heard this, because it, you know, I think it struck everyone when he said this, you know, "close the bars and keep the schools open," but he really, he really had a shout-out for schools, like, you know, they have to, within reason, try to keep the kids in school, mitigate the things that push community spread, but the, those are the things that drive the community spread, not the schools. It's, it's the other things that we need to think about. So, so it was right out of the man's mouth, and I felt it was worth sharing, that schools are not, schools are not driving the spread. I keep, I think I'm pushing the button and, and aiming at you, and then you pushed the button there, so I'll just stop. So, worldwide experience, UNICEF said, you know, the, the net benefits of keeping school outweigh the costs of closing them, schools are not a main driver of transmission. You want to click again? In England, Cambridge, talking about, we have more data, the data has progressed. You know, when the school has spread, it was Israel, Georgia, Utah, where they were in crowded classrooms, and nobody was masked. And so, you know, they're talking about this change in evidence, which is why we're here today, because we've, we've learned more. Next slide. So, most European countries have arrested and reversed the resurgence in cases while keeping schools open. This just goes through all of the European countries where it shows that, you know, we can decrease spread without closing. Next slide. So the, this is from JAMA, and I felt it was telling enough to share. Next slide. That closures don't save lives. So they looked at years of life lost under prime, keeping schools open and keeping schools closed, and they modeled it, and models are never perfect, but I found it impressive that there's a 98.1% probability that there'd be more years of life lost under closure than open, because we're all talking about risk-benefit. And, and transmission, it was, this is an underestimate most likely, because it was only looking at March through May, and it didn't consider that transmission in schools is lower than we thought it would be. Next slide, please. So it's important to just think about equity, and I do want to say that we know our teachers are working harder than ever, so we keep talking about virtual, you know, not being the, the ideal option, but we're so grateful for how hard they're working in, in everything that they're doing to try to prevent this learning loss, but we do have to acknowledge that we are going to be looking at that in the time ahead. Next slide, please. And our, our Black and Brown families, many of them will continue to choose remote learning, so it is key to make that, that virtual option the best it can be for everyone. But I would say that closing schools really isn't the answer to how to address the inequity. We need to be, need to be able to give a choice and work to improve the systemic racism in our society and educational system as a whole, but not by closing schools if it doesn't add any benefit to anyone and only causes harm. Next slide. So, back to the questions to ask, what do we need to be asking right now? We need to be looking at, how well are we mitigating? These are all questions that I turn over to leadership, who I know wouldn't have brought us here if he wasn't interested in getting these kids back to school safely and keeping our staff safe. So, how well are you mitigating? What is the extent of transmission within the school and the burden of the disease on the school? And by burden of disease, you can consider things like absenteeism, ability to staff, outbreaks, adherence to mitigation. Closures of class in schools are health decisions, just like other communicable diseases. So in the past, like every once in a while, every few years, if we get a bad flu season, you might hear, "oh, this school had to close," or "that school had to close." Those are health decisions. You don't have to come here and meet until midnight to decide that, fortunately. But, you know, those are things that, that the Health Department is prepared to be able to assist our leadership with. And then how, how is the community doing? Next slide, please. So it's all really, remains a factor of risks versus benefits and the progression of the science. And in March, you know, we closed schools because we wanted to save lives. We, you know, didn't know what was going on, and we're trying to do the best thing, and, but now, it's really become clear, and I hope I kind of gave you an overview, that this isn't just, you know, a few of us in Virginia Beach who think this is true, this is across the state, when I meet with my colleagues from the Virginia AAP, when I look at the other states, that we're very safety-conscious, and we are recognizing that closing schools really only causes harm. And so the new question is, how do we stay open safely and minimize closures and burden to the schools? We have to follow the data, we have to use mitigation, monitoring, and protect our staff and teachers. And I would put out a call to our community, help us get our numbers down, but as long Um, but as long as, as long as, um, closures don't benefit the community or hospitals, then, then we should look to do what we can to stay open. Um, we've talked before, Dr. Spence and I, about was there a way to get a transmission metric for the schools? And I've put that question out to experts at the VDH, and they've said, you know, that the dilemma is really that there are so many few, there are such few cases transmitted in schools that the math is difficult to portray in a comparative way. That's a good thing, but that's why it's, it's just difficult. So it really has to be sort of an individualized decision as it is, um, as it has been in the past. And the last slide. Um, so again, I think what the data shows is that the best way to protect teachers and students isn't to shut down schools. It's to focus on all the other measures that will keep them and their families, friends, and neighbors safe outside the classroom. And I feel that we need to think hard about this ranking right here, that we need to put our schools first as far as, um, priority in, in, in keeping, keeping them open. Is that my time? I thought I did it. I, I was having flashbacks to recess. You're at three and a half minutes. Anyway. That's it. No tomatoes? Thank you. We're here for, we're here for questions. I kind of stole all the slides, but it was my turn.
So I'll note, um, Madam Chair, that in addition to the physicians that we've been working with who are in the room with us, that Dr. Lindsay from the Department of Health is now on Zoom and available to answer questions as well, so.
Uh, so maybe I'll pose this to Dr. Lindsay. Are you on, Dr. Lindsay?
She is, but she hasn't finished connecting yet.
Okay. So I feel we'll start with Dr. Lindsay by asking if she would like to start with any remarks to us and then, or just right, go right into questions.
Dr. Lindsay, if you can hear us, could you unmute, please?
Hello?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for, for being available for us today. So, uh, did you have the chance to, uh, listen in on Dr. Roland's presentation?
Uh, no, I didn't know she was, I didn't know she was presenting. Did she present earlier?
Uh, just moments ago, but, uh, that's, that's fine. We wanted to ask you, um, now, if you do want her to share, if it benefits you, I mean, for a quick synopsis, but we wanted to ask you if you have, if you wanted to begin with any remarks to us before we got into questions.
It might be helpful for me to have a little bit that understanding of the format. Um, I had heard discussion, so, um, my understanding was it was kind of a work group to discuss.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can we ask Dr. Roland to just give her own summary of, of the past half hour?
Hi, Dr. Lindsay. I'm sure they wouldn't mind if I just did the summary again. No, the whole presentation. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I'm, I'm looking at a slide message to our community. Is that part of your presentation?
That was the end.
And I know, I know you, you and I have talked about how we really just want our community to rally behind schools by doing the things that they need to do to get cases down. Um, because that just makes everything easier on schools, and I, I know you all are, um, working so hard with the contact tracing. And so that was my ending, was the call to the community. But basically what, what I just tried to share with them is that where we started and where we are and what we know about, we knew about transmission, what has proven to be true, and just about, it's all a risk versus benefit decision and the importance of mitigation within a school and how Virginia Beach has done, how other schools have done. We talked about worldwide, um, findings as well as, um, national, you know, as far as the, the governors from the northeastern states really talking about that in-person learning, um, should be prioritized, even, um, in communities with high transmission, if they can mitigate well. And so we went through a bit, but, um, really in just following the data, using mitigation and monitoring to protect our, our staff and teachers, how to stay open safely and minimize closures and burdens to the school. So we didn't get into any of the planning because that's Dr. Spence's job. I was just updating.
I didn't understand you.
Oh, I just said, we didn't get into any planning or any details. It was just all sort of reviewing the data.
And if I could add, Dr. Lindsay, again, I think certainly the focus where we're at at this point is school transmission versus community transmission and how one impacts the other. I'm just anticipating. So maybe we, with that, would you like to share anything before we just get into a quest, a Q and A format?
Uh, well, uh, I will make a few comments. Um, you know, I, I, to, to start with, I know we're talking about a consideration of, of other factors in, in terms of how we should look at continuing uh, to have children in schools. I did want to start by saying that, um, you know, public health does value the importance of children being able to return to school as well. Uh, I would add the word safely and underline safely to that. And, uh, we, uh, want to support, um, that concept as much as, as possible to, to ensure that, that that can happen. Uh, I would agree with Dr. Roland that a significant factor in that is uh, the importance of communities and parents and families doing everything that they can to help, uh, reduce our numbers as much as possible um, in, in terms of, of disease burden and community transmission of disease that is going on. At this point, we are in, um, a situation where we have substantial community transmission um, in, in Virginia Beach and also in our region. And it is, has been accelerating at a very rapid pace. A lot of, I think what we see in the, the literature and, and what I'm seeing in terms of recommendations uh, do acknowledge that it appears that the risks, uh, from children and to children may be lower. However, it is not zero. And, um, most of the data that we are aware of, um, really addresses it, or, or the, the comfort zone may be, uh, when community transmission is low or at least moderate. And with all of, with most, many of the recommendations that you read, there is that, that disclaimer, that conditional phrase that is used, then community transmission is low. Uh, beyond that, I think when we start getting into the situation that we are experiencing now, um, what we have, uh, is a situation as to, um, um, relying to some extent on our experiences and being very careful, engaging, and assessing, uh, the impact uh, on schools, uh, as we continue to move forward. So looking back over the period of time since we started in school transmission, starting in September, I would say overall, Virginia Beach did very well. Um, we had, uh, we were fortunate in having, uh, relatively few, uh, cases and outbreaks. Although near the end, as we started to get, uh, to see higher levels of transmission in school, in, uh, the community, uh, we did start to see, um, the beginning of a rise in transmission as well, uh, or in cases in the school, although evidence of in-school transmission, uh, may have, uh, was not significant. Um, that said, um, it, it does, uh, uh, raise, um, some concerns in terms of, I don't think that we have enough information or data out there to say, where is that tipping point at which if, uh, we continue with, um, in-school, uh, activity, uh, at higher and higher rates of community transmission, where's that tipping point where, uh, we may, uh, end up with, um, transmission, that, uh, challenges our resources, uh, and does, uh, increase risk? Um, and with rising rates of community transmission, I think it is, uh, it is, um, reasonable to, to expect that risk does increase. As I said, it is not zero. That said, um, from a public health perspective, I am concerned that we proceed, with, uh, caution and that we continue to monitor, um, our progress and continue to assess of what is going on in the schools in terms of data and our contact, uh, case investigations and contact tracing so that we have, uh, continued and, and, uh, early appreciation of ongoing impact, uh, as we progress with returning students to school. So I think I'll stop there and, um, uh, turn it back to you for your discussion.
Can I add one item to that? Thanks, Dr. Lindsay.
If there, if there was a comment, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was getting an echo. I was just waiting to speak. Um, I think that's where we go to our leadership and say, look, if we are making moves to open, it's different to open. And that's getting back to the three core indicators. It's different to open when levels of the community are low or moderate um, than when levels are high. It's, it is different, and we have to acknowledge that and then take protections and safety plans to a different level than they would be. It doesn't mean don't open, but it means I turned to Dr. Spence and say, which I did when we were talking about this a little bit, and I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but, um, where I turn him and say, so how can we make mitigation the best that it can be? And how can we monitor that? Because it is different to do that during low levels. That's his job. That's the operations to say, this is what we're going to do to keep our staff safe. And so we have to acknowledge the community because we have to do things a bit differently in the more intense level. And, um, perhaps have the, you know, that's why he's doing the hybrid plan and we're, we're adhering to, um, trying to cohort and have these staggered lunches and do all of these things. Because when the transmission is higher, the risk is higher, so you have to take extra protections.
Okay, Dr. Lindsay, this is Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. So we, we're going to open it up for, uh, questions from my colleagues to you and the other doctors present. And we'll, we're, we'll start with Mrs. Manning, and our Zoom colleagues, please communicate with Matt, with our clerk uh, so that you can be part of this conversation.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, so I'll try not to monopolize the time, but I think we've got quite a bit of time here today, fortunately. Um, one of the slides that I really liked, Dr. Roland, um, that stood out to me was the progression of the science slide. Um, it says, in March, closing schools was done to save lives. Now closing schools will only cause harm. Um, I was wondering, i- is this, um, is this something agreed upon by all the physicians here in the room? And, and if so, could you elaborate a little bit on, um, how closing schools will only cause harm?
And Mrs. Manning, can, Mrs. Manning, can you share the page number of the slide?
Uh, page twelve.
Yeah, I'll take that one. This is Doug Mitchell for, um, CHK also.
Hi, Dr. Mitchell, and welcome back to you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I don't have to use the GPS quite as much to get to the building, but anyway. Um, the, the data that's building is, is clear, is that the harm is minimal for children, not zero. It's not, from the disease itself or from the spread, as Dr. Roland so, uh, described so well. But the harm is the downstream effects, uh, that we are really starting to see now that we did not know for certain. In July, we had fears, but we're seeing it, and that is the mental health effect. Um, two, two components. The mental health effect, first of all. The levels of anxiety, the la- levels of depression, um, the demand on the healthcare resources for mental health care, um, the number of ER visits. It's hard to get to the data. It's hard to publish it, other than anecdotal right now. Um, but the number of ER visits for suicidal ideation and attempts is the highest that we've ever seen. Um, those experiences in caring for true harm to our children are clearly going to be borne out in the data as they become more available over time. Um, and then, a- as Dr. Roland also put in one of the slides, the educational harm to our children. Um, it is very clear that, um, particularly in the poor, uh, and minority populations, that there, that the, that the discrepancies are becoming greater. Uh, the haves versus the have-nots, that distance is becoming greater in the educational opportunities for those children. Um, we all as pediatricians see every day the kids that are minimally engaged or, um, not engaged at all with the online learning, which is their only opportunity. And the trouble and the struggles that the parents that are having trouble putting food on the table and are relying upon others or some sort of ad hoc group to help monitor their children while they're doing virtual learning is not working as well as we would like. Um, as opposed to those that have the resources that to supervise or to have good daycare where they're truly being monitored while they're doing their virtual learning, that is setting a, a huge disconnect in the learning opportunities for those that are already struggling. Uh, so I think those are the, um, ongoing harm that we are seeing definitely from having, from the lack of face-to-face learning.
Thank you. Did, did you want to share also?
I can't help but add to that. I think there are some kids that are never going to recover from missing school, that we've just lost them. I see them in my office. I think Virginia Beach is fortunate in having such incredible teachers and resources, but we're going to lose some of them. And we'll see, we'll have that data, but, but that, that's happening. With the learning loss and the loss of lifetime income, um, you know, one, sometimes they're, they're just never going to catch up. Early childhood in particular, but also later on when it's important, um, obesity rates skyrocketing. When kids gain weight in childhood, it's extremely difficult to get it to come off. They can have their metabolism sort of flip and, and, and never really fully recover. Um, in September, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand women, um, dropped out of the workforce. And I see every day, especially this was in September, I see moms come in. They were hanging on till September, and then, you know, they hanging on till September, and then, you know, they, they couldn't do it anymore, they couldn't do the juggle anymore. So it's an impact on, on the whole family. Nurses, healthcare workers have had to quit their jobs. Kids are brought in. I think he's got ADD. Oh, no, he doesn't. He's just six years old and he can't do the Zoom for more than an hour at a time. And, and they beg me, can you please put him on? I'm like, just talk to the teacher, it's okay, like, do what you can. But it's real, and so I'll let Heidi talk here, but I, I feel the reason I'm spending all this time, I'm just, you know, pediatrician in your community who is now involved in the state and doing all these things, meeting all these other people who want to help, but this is the emotional part next to the data, but it's because every single time that I go to work, I see multiple kids in my day who are in either big trouble because of suicidality and depression. That is a direct fact of not being in school. They're signed up for face-to-face, they want to go to school. I also see some kids are doing great in virtual learning. I'm not saying this is everybody, but I see something before me that is preventable, and it is not now based on the science to close school. Closing schools is no longer based in science, which is, sorry if I went on a tangent, but we had two hours, so you gave me the luxury. I'll let Dr. Best pipe in.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Heidi Best, first-time caller. Now, so I just wanted to say, I, I do agree wholeheartedly with the comments made here, and a couple of just points I wanted to make. So I'm an emergency room physician, so I do see the worst of the worst for COVID and also for mental health. It is no secret that there is a shortage of mental health supplies and resources for everyone. We are routinely holding patients in the emergency department for days sometimes, waiting for admission to psychiatric beds. That's adults, that's kids, and it suggests that the kids are not experiencing the same levels of anxiety and depression from this shutdown, like the adults is, we're kind of deluding ourselves there. And we'll say Kempsville, which is a resource for psychiatric care for kids, always full. I, I cannot tell you the last time I had to call Kempsville facility for a child to admit there, and they directly went in. They're routinely staying for hours in the emergency department, waiting for admission to Kempsville because they're overburdened with this. Couple of other things I just wanted to hit on, you know, we, we keep saying we've been fortunate not to have transmission in schools in Virginia Beach. No, we worked, we worked hard to make sure we didn't have transmission in schools in Virginia Beach. I think this group here, I think at the school level, at the teacher level, everybody has been pitching in, and so I, I think we should give you guys a little bit more credit to saying it's not just being fortunate, it's really by using these mitigation strategies that has decreased the level of transmission in schools. Last, as an emergency room physician, I'll say, the risk is never zero. We take risks every day, and every single patient I see, it's all about risks and benefits. And to me, it's very clear that the risk of having schools shut down is far worse for the kids than going back with mitigation strategies. I've seen that in my patients, and I've seen that in my own children as well, so that's all.
Chairman would I, please add Ms. Hughes and Ms. Riggs to the queue?
Thank you.
Done, thank you.
Can I ask my second question, and then I'll pass it on? And this may be, I'm not sure if this will be best for you all or Dr. Lindsay, but I was trying to understand how the data is formulated around cases. And so I spent a lot of time over the last couple of days on the Virginia Department of Health website, and I've come to know it quite well over the last several months. And I wanted, you know, with this being the season where we are experiencing, typically experience more illness than normal as, as things wrap up to flu season and other illnesses, I wanted to kind of get a, some insight as to what's going on in the influenza world. And so I pulled up the weekly influenza activity report on the Virginia Department of Health website, and it shows that last year, during this period of time, we were in widespread, which is the highest, we were in widespread activity level. And right now, it's showing that we have no activity. So I went in to look at how are cases determined of COVID? One of the ways is through a positive test, but from what I found, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because this is what I, what I have surmised based upon all of the information that I've read, is that if a person presents with symptoms, certain symptoms, it could be just a cough, and they were, they happened to have been exposed in the past to someone who had a probable case of COVID, they would then be labeled as a case. This is what I read on the Department of Health's website, and so I'm just trying to get some insight since influenza does have some of the same symptoms, the cold has some of the same symptoms. Is it possible that some of these typical illnesses that we have annually are being factored into the cases?
Was that question for me? For Dr. Lindsay?
Uh, Dr. Best, go ahead, Dr. Best. I'm just going to make one comment. For the patients that we see, we don't have immediate rapid testing available in the emergency room, so it takes a couple of hours. You guys probably wouldn't want to wait around for a couple of hours in the ER for your test to come back. So they might get diagnosed suspected COVID or cough and get a test, and so we're not going to diagnose them necessarily with COVID upon discharge from the emergency department, even if we suspect it, because we don't have a positive test back. So that may be where you're getting some of that information, or that positive but not positive.
Okay. Dr. Lindsay, can you elaborate as to whether or not, you know, is, is, was my statement accurate?
I would say that the majority, the vast majority of the cases that are counted are, are cases that are, are confirmed by a laboratory test. However, you can have what we call epilink cases, or, so for example, if you have a confirmed positive case in a household, and then an individual in that household develops the same consistent symptoms within a period of time in which the index case would have been infectious, then that could be, would be, could be determined as being an epilink case and could be counted in that manner as, as also being positive. But the website should also be able to be, you should be able to also see what, which cases are actually confirmed versus epilink. And there has to be a very strong evidence to support that that case is most likely also COVID. So I think it's unlikely in that situation that they, that that would be likely to be confused with a case of flu.
Okay. That's probably what I had read on the Department of Health website, so I'm just a little confused.
It looks like Dr. Mitchell wants to weigh in, Mrs. Manning.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, it's hard to go back.
Well, that's why I initially deferred to Dr. Lindsay as well, is we're really talking about two things here. One is the public health epidemiologic definition, which is indeed kind of what gets reported, and that's what Dr. Lindsay was describing so well, that, you know, you're, you're looking at linkages. We're in a different era now, you know, I've practiced for years, and I, you know, and with flu, there was very definitely this influenza-like illness, you know? And if it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it must be a duck. That's not what we're doing today. That's not applying to what's going on right now. And so what Dr. Lindsay just described is if you've got a positive at home, that's already on contact investigation, hopefully already under isolation and quarantine for that family, and if there is another symptomatic person, you sort of say, yeah, it's more than likely, is it worth getting the test? Very much a public health epidemiologic approach to that. In clinical practice, we're not doing much of that. We've got, at least in kids in our community, we've got reliable, accessible testing, and in the kids, we're not necessarily doing, you walk like a duck, talk like a duck, it must be a duck. We're doing the confirmation of those kids with, not in abundance of testing, but we have a very low threshold of the kids that we're testing. In just the CHKD practices, not even the urgent care in the emergency room, we tested 770 children last week, last week, okay? And so we're, we're doing in the kids, good confirmatory testing for those that may have the illness.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm just, you know, since we are measuring things by total cases and percent positivity, the total cases, when I'm, when I'm seeing this influenza report and we have no activity, and, but yet we're spiking in COVID, that's where I just want to get clarification if there's, if that could, those symptoms could be combined with total cases.
I'd say there's no flu right now.
Really?
But that's a, that's a very different situation.
There's just no flu.
Wow, just a late flu season? Okay.
Maybe we'll have, maybe we'll get lucky and not have a lot of flu this year with all the masking and the hand washing.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. I'll, I'll defer for later.
Thank you, very interesting. Mr. Edwards, and then Ms. Owens.
A, a quick one for Dr. Roland. The, those schools that are open around the country, around the world, are most of them, and again, this was probably more of an education question, but since you seem to be, are most of them open only with no virtual option? Or are, is it a lot of them in a hybrid where they're offering parents the option to retain and, and offering virtual where they can?
From all of the spots I've looked at in this country, most places in the US are trying to opt, offer a virtual option as well. Abroad, I don't think so. Yeah, I think they're doing more trying to get the kids in person, but I don't know for sure. But in this country, it's more parallel.
Thank you. The other question for Dr. Lindsay, and I, I kind of want to cut to the chase, I, we're obviously, the opportunity for a lot of dialogue here, but are, where we are today, are you as the Virginia Beach Health Department rep, are, are you continuing to recommend that it is unsafe for us to have schools open?
I had a little bit of difficulty hearing you. I think the question was, am I continuing to recommend that it's unsafe for schools to open? Is that the question?
Well, you supported our reopening plan, and if we do, I guess to be more specific, if we, if this board opted to deviate from that plan and follow some of the earlier suggestive guidance from the other medical reps here that we need to get open, and there's good reasons for it, would we have your support in doing that?
I am not opposed to opening schools, however, I, I would recommend that we do it with some caution. I do have concerns about the level of community transmission that we have in our community at this point, and I think that that deserves us really paying very close attention and, again, proceeding with caution. My recommendation would be that if we consider opening, that it should be done in phases, that we allow adequate time between those phases to, to review the data and information carefully, to make sure that we have a full appreciation, public health and the schools in collaboration with understanding where we are in terms of the impact on the schools, and also our resources on both sides to be able to continue to do the, the investigations and contact tracing that we need to do to ensure that it continues to be safe. I very strongly agree that mitig, the mitigation strategies are critical. I would remind you that when it comes to those mitigation strategies, we're doing well, but we're not at ideal. Our social distancing, for the most part, in the schools is at three feet. That so far, we've done relatively well, but we were beginning to see some straining of our system in terms of resources on both sides for case investigations, where we're beginning to see higher numbers of cases. And as we're looking at this data a little bit closer, we're seeing cases in some of the schools that may have not been regarded as a rise into the level of public health reporting that we would want to look at a little bit closer to make sure that there aren't any epi linkages within those cases when there are multiple cases within the building. So the short, the short answer is, I'm not opposed to it, but I very strongly respect the fact that we have very high community transmission rates, and I think we should proceed with caution and with care.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Okay. I didn't know, you know, how much dialogue I need to raise my hand or. I think this is where we can help each other too across the state and, and learn from our sister districts and other areas, and so that's where that collaboration can really be helpful, looking in other areas, because we do have a sister city who is open, you know, and, and they are in the red, and, and so we are different, and, you know, Dr. Lindsay has reminded me, you know, Virginia Beach, every, every area is different. We have, Virginia Beach is a sprawling area, we have different neighborhoods from, you know, one to the other, but, but certainly we can learn a bit from them, and so their adherence to mitigation, you know, despite being in the red the last few weeks, has, has proven to be working. They're still not seeing epi school transmission, it's just that when there are more cases in their community, there's more cases in the schools, cases not spread, big difference. But each one of those cases, as Dr. Lindsay alluded to, requires people power to contact trace and, and do the quarantine, and so one issue that can happen is staffing, you know, and that's where Dr. Spence has to say, well, if I can't staff my school because people are in quarantine, then we got to shut that school down. And so it's not even necessarily that everyone is sick, but people are in quarantine, you know, which is, which is very different, but that, that's what we have to think about. And so it's useful to look at them and watch what's been happening since Thanksgiving, and they went, whoa, yeah, you all really were hanging out and going to your family get-togethers, weren't you? And, you know, the cases are climbing, creating a lot of, a lot of work, and so that can then inform, you know, return to school and all of that other stuff. But I, I think that it's important to learn what we can from others, too.
I, I can't say that I have detailed familiarity with what is going on in all of the districts to the level. If I were in that district, I would say from what I've seen, they are having a very large number of cases. I will also add that I am in consultation with our epidemiologic team at the state level, and what I'm speaking of incorporates insights based on what we're experiencing across the state, and there is concern that as we start down this road, going into, to, trying to, to have advance in, in terms of having in-school learning at this level of community-level transmission, that there is concern that we do need to proceed with, with caution, that there is somewhat of an unknown. I, I don't think this is an area that we do have a lot of knowledge in terms of what will happen at this level of community transmission. Most of the, many of the recommendations that I'm reading Most of the, many of the recommendations that I'm reading, when we speak of levels of transmission that we would consider high, in which case is where we are, there is, there is that acknowledgement that we're in a, in an area of potentially higher risk and we do, do need to proceed with caution. So, I'm not comfortable in saying that we just look to what one other school is doing to make decisions about what is safe for our children, that we look at this much more broadly.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay.
Chairwoman Ryan, can you please add Ms. Weems to the queue?
Okay, so we have Ms. Owens and then Mrs. Hughes. If you could stay on, uh, in the, your, Mrs. Hughes is next, okay.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, but I guess the first one to Dr. Lindsay and then any of the other medical doctors who are here who would like to weigh in. I know that colleges are seeing outbreaks and that those are adults and that is a different scenario than what we're dealing with in our district. But I also know that they're doing baseline testing. And so, I'm curious if we're aware of any elementary or secondary schools anywhere that are doing baseline testing? And if there's a way that we would know or recognize asymptomatic spread within a school without baseline testing?
Do you need any of that repeated, Dr. Lindsay?
I am having some difficulty hearing. I heard part of the question. I think I was hearing, are there any schools that are doing testing in the, in the elementary school level? There, we do have some private schools that have the capability of, of testing.
Right, so baseline testing.
Aware of anywhere where that's happening? That we have a, a look at schools that are in our metrics to, to see what the, the transmission rates look like with baseline testing? And then the other part was, is there a way that we will know if we have asymptomatic spread in a school? What would that look like? Would we recognize it?
So, I'm, I'm not aware, it's not to say that it's not happening. I'm not aware if we have any schools that are actually doing routine baseline testing. I think it is more directed at symptomatic cases or contacts or in some cases, children who may have engaged in some known risk activity and, and testing those children. So, I don't know that I can speak to baseline levels in terms of being able to identify evidence of in-school transmission. I think it would be helpful if we were able to do more testing. Some of, there may be some indication of that if we were possibly doing testing in the school individ of a case and, and looking at contact tracing and, and possibly testing some of those students. The, I will speak to the, this issue in terms of the current limitation. And that is that we do not have the ability to order or oversee testing in the schools. It does require the school having a clear certificate to be able to have a program. That is something that we are having some dialogue about at the state level and certainly willing to explore that potential further. But at this point, we don't have that possibility. If, I suppose if you had, if you, if the schools do have a lab that may potentially have a clear certificate and a physician who could sign off on it, then that would be something that we may be able to help out with actually providing testing kits.
Thank you, my doctor.
Yeah, great question. I am aware from conversation with colleagues and all, and, and others that, again, there are private schools in the region that are doing some routine testing. There are some advantages to that, but it's not perfect either. It's not a panacea. The testing, particularly to get a rapid turnaround or truly intervene with somebody that might be contagious, those tests are less reliable. They are not fully approved. If they're being used in asymptomatic people, they're not being used in the way that was truly authorized by the FDA. Those rapid tests have really only been authorized to be used in symptomatic people. And so, we don't know the true reliability. So, I hear about those. I take it with a little bit of grain of salt. It's useful, but it's not perfect, is, is the best take home from that. And, and there again, if you do the better testing, you know, if it's even a couple of days, if you haven't isolated appropriately because somebody's asymptomatic and you're doing routine testing, you're, you're missing holes in that Swiss cheese. And so, you're really still back to the same mitigation factors are your most important things to do. And then testing symptomatic children in a rapid, most reliable method is, is the best we can do. Would it be ideal if we could do everybody with the best test same day every, every time they walked in? Sure. I don't think we're anywhere close to that.
Anything else, Ms. Owens, before?
Yep.
We have Dr. Best.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to share, so Norfolk Academy, I know, did testing before they let all of their students come back. And they actually had a press release that they had four hundred and ninety-four people tested, students and staff, and only one came back positive before opening. So, and I think they were doing a testing strategy throughout the school year as well. I don't have the results on that, but, but I know they were using the approach that you're discussing.
And I know recently, I can't pull the numbers off from the top of my head, but I know recently New York City did massive testing and were shocked at how low the numbers were because they were thinking, like you did, that's a, you know, a good question, are they spreading it? But their numbers were extremely low. I think the other point that's very key is that eight kids who are not asymptomatic, who are asymptomatic are not good spreaders, you know? So they, so can you find those cases? I'm sure there's got to be a few, you know, that are coming and just, you know? But when they've done the big testing in New York City and so forth, they were surprised at how few numbers there actually were. I can find that out and send it to you. But the other, the other piece is that these kids aren't good at giving it, you know, because they're not, they're not shedding it. They're not. Yeah, which is important.
Did you have a second, Ms. Owens?
Yep, definitely. This one is kind of leaning towards the mental health. Dr. Mitchell may have this information. You mentioned that right now, the ER visits for mental health issues, suicidal ideation, et cetera, are at the highest that we've ever seen. And that that's kind of anecdotal, but that you feel it's the highest we've ever seen. Do you know, can you tell us what, like, the previous time we were at the highest we've ever seen? Was that last year or was that a different time? Just something to give us some perspective of what we're, we're saying when we say the highest we've ever seen.
Sure, it's fair, fair to try and nail me against the wall. Fair enough. It's okay. You know, that's what this question answer is all about. And that is that it continues to escalate. You know, even before the onset of the pandemic, the level of mental health needs in pediatrics was continuing purely on an upward trend. And so, where would it have been today without the pandemic? I don't have that crystal ball. All I can tell you is everything that we know shows that it has escalated faster than we would have ever anticipated without the pandemic.
Okay. And that's kind of what I was thinking. I, I just wanted to understand that we probably for the last four years, anytime we would have came in the room, we would have said we are at the highest that we've ever been for mental health in the ERs with children.
Yeah, and, you know, just even in our own community at CHKD, three years ago, four years ago, we had two psychiatrists. And the wait time was three months if you were lucky.
Yep.
We had, five, six years ago, we had maybe a half dozen LCSW therapists. We have twenty-five or thirty on staff at CHKD now. The wait time before was three months if you were lucky. Now, with that huge numbers, we now have eight psychiatrists on staff at CHKD and the wait times are no better and probably even worse than what we had, even with that huge growth in the capacity that we've got for providing mental health care at CHKD.
Okay. Dr. Spence, did you have something to, to share? I couldn't tell from the eye contact. Okay. So, Mrs. Hughes and then Mrs. Riggs.
Hi, I'm really, really happy to hear you all out here and I'm so, so happy to hear you recommend that, you know, it's, it's good to have schools open. I think we all need to acknowledge that trying to get to zero on any disease ever is unrealistic. You can never really completely eradicate anything. And I am very, very happy to hear that we're finally acknowledging the mental health issues. And I, I do understand there, that it has been steadily climbing and that not everybody is willing to give enough weight to these closures as far as escalating it. But I think that we've seen for years studies on children who spend too much time online, too much time in front of the television, too much time isolated with these electronics. And now, that's necessarily happening to continue learning. So while they're required to be in lockdown and not see people as much, they're also being required to spend more and more time online. So it's being escalated. And I just, I am really, really happy to hear recommending that these children go to school. So, thank you.
Is that it for now, Mrs. Hughes?
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Riggs and then Mrs. Weems.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, great. First of all, I just want to mention the fact that it's very difficult to hear people that are speaking in there from the microphone. It's very muffled. So I understand what Ms. Lindsay is saying. I can hear her really well. And I think she's coming in virtually as well. But Dr. Mitchell and the other doctors are just very difficult to hear. So I did want to make that point. And I, I know there's not much you can do about it. I guess it's the equipment. I'm not sure. But I will have to say, I, I, first of all, I want to make a statement and whether you guys want me to or not, I am home because of sickness. I have COVID and so does my husband, I think. And I want to point out that, you know, we've been careful, but we've been out. I've been to a gym. I go to a gym every morning. My husband has not. And I'm, I'm concerned, as Ms. Lindsay is too, that we have a huge amount of people that are out and about in the community. And I, my thoughts are, if, if, I know we're saying that it's not being spread in the schools and the children are, you know, it's safer and the mitigation, we, we're doing great mitigation. However, if these kids, and we keep getting emails from parents and from people that are saying, I don't understand why they can't go to school. My kids are going to practices, they're going to games, we're going to restaurants. One parent even said, you know, during Thanksgiving, we were on four different airlines and we are fine. Well, that's all community spread. I, I'm understanding, I guess that's, I'm right. So if these people are out and about, and we all are, and they're spreading it and they're getting, they're with each other in the community, people were at Town Center shoulder to shoulder this past weekend. And they're out and about, but, and they, they've got their kids and then they're sending them to schools. What about that community spread that they're bringing into the schools to the adults that are in the schools? Maybe the kids aren't getting it as much, but we are hearing more kids getting it now. So, I, I'm very concerned about recommending us going, going back when we have such a high level of community being spread and a, and a high level of, of cases right now. Can you make it better about that?
Can you hear me better if I talk into the microphone?
Yes.
Okay. I think you might not, I wonder, did you hear my, the presentation? Because that?
Yes, I did. Yes.
I think this goes back to the point that community spread, communities are different than schools. Because in schools, it's a more controlled environment. They're not shoulder to shoulder. At least we hope. If they are, then, you know, that's Dr. Spence's responsibility at the high community transmission to tell us how he's going to make sure mitigation is carried out and enforced. That's an operations issue. But in general, if we can do enough of the layers of the Swiss cheese and we've proven that we can do enough, other schools have proven that we can do enough, those are, those are what we look to do and wa, monitor closely. As Dr. Lindsay said, we've got to be vigilant and watching and making sure we're doing everything possible to keep our staff and students safe within the schools, then we, then we can stay open. We are not Town Center. We are not the people at the gyms. We are a school with rules that need to be followed and protocols in place. And all of these things that we've practiced during the time when we were at lower, we didn't want to. So, I've had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Furlano on the state level through my work with the Virginia American and County Pediatrics Task Force. And, you know, she talks about, she worries not about the schools that have reopened already safely and done well. She worries more about the schools that haven't even tried yet. And so, she's thinking about how are, how are those folks going to get open? It's not that she's opposed to it, but it, it's that they haven't practiced yet. So Virginia Beach City Public Schools has, has started, they've been laying the groundwork. They've been getting the Plexiglas, you know, since the summer and they've got all of this in place. Can we always do, do more and do better? Yes, we can. But I would say that we're not a gym. This is different and, and it, it doesn't mean that schools can't open. Does that help address your question a little bit?
It's somewhat, but you guys are also the ones that have recommended us, you know, told us, told us to monitor the percent positivity in the cases per day. So, do you, do you recommend us to monitor any community transmission metrics?
Of course.
That's because, you know, at the highest level of community transmission, that's when you have to do, you look at your third indicator. So, we had, we had indicators before there were indicators. We did this in July. That's why we didn't really have the third piece. We didn't really think to look at transmission. We didn't, that wasn't really a consideration at the time. We were just trying to get open. So it's different to get open than to stay open and we're at a different place in July. I mean, science is just like this. It's, you don't want to go to this doctor who's practicing the same way she did in residency. You know, we have to look at the ongoing data and what we know. And so, what we know now in December is different, although there's a lot of similarities as I started off in the beginning of my talk from July. What you still know about kids that we thought in July, but that we now know more. So, I would say it's not that I'm saying, oh, throw that out. Who cares what's going on in the community? No, we care. But an absolute adherence, as in the CHOP guidance, as I think we'll see in, in other states' guidance and, and likely coming to us, though, you know, that's not my job. But, but is, is that an absolute adherence to some particular? adherence to some particular number. It's an overall tricky risk benefit balance issue. So it, it's complicated, it's messy, but if we err on the side of being too rigid, we can end up doing harm without meaning to. We can end up doing harm. That's preventable. Does that answer your question? Cause feel free to, you know, hammer me. That's why I'm here.
Somewhat it uh, does, but I still have to say, um, you know, we did mitigations in the gym. I worked in the gym as well in the morning.
Mrs. Riggs, we need now to hear you a little more clearer.
Can you hear me?
A little louder?
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
I can hear you. Your volume is a bit low.
Okay, um, I tried to bring it up. Okay, I'm gonna talk. Can you hear me now? I'm closer.
Oh, just, but just go ahead and proceed. We'll let you know.
Can you hear me?
Yes, just not as well as a few moments ago. I'm not sure why.
I don't either. I mean, because I'm talking, I'm even closer to my computer and I'm trying to um-
All right, well, go.
Well, go ahead. We can hear you well enough to get in your, and, and let us know too if you want Dr. Lindsay to weigh in with your questions.
Okay, um.
Dr. Mitchell is at the podium. Would you like him to, uh, why don't you go ahead and proceed, Dr. Mitchell?
I just do it.
Back to some of the points that Dr. Roman made in the initial presentation. Community spread is certainly happening and we know it's happening in spite of proper measures or improper measures, that sort of thing. Um, and those are not meant to be judgments, but the data are very clear that children are much more likely to get it from adults than they are to give it back to adults or to give it to other children. So a child may acquire it from their, the adults in the home getting it because uh, the adult's more likely to get it. The adult's more likely to spread it when they do other things with other adults, um, mitigated or unmitigated. Uh, but once it goes to the child, once, you know, if that child is identified as a case, doesn't mean they've spread it. In the school, they are much less likely to tr- spread it to other children or to the teachers. And so that's sort of the difference between what's happening in the community and potentially happening in the schools is that relative risk of spread once it's in the index case that we're looking at.
Dr. Lindsay.
I would say that, um, this is Dr. Lindsay.
Thank you, Dr.
I, I would say that um, when we were looking, when those, those measures were, were proposed by this advisory group to look at that um, i- in some ways from, from my perspective, uh, those did represent sort of a surrogate way of, of trying to get a sense of community level transmission. None of these measures were perfect, uh, but the um, and, and they were very useful and beneficial, I think, when we were starting this, trying to come up with tools to help make a decision about school reopening and, and kinda the how uh, we would go about that. Uh, but since that time, we've had some experience in the schools and there are other factors that can be taken into consideration that have been learned. Um, and it's so, um, that, that said, I still think that community transmission is an important issue. Yes, I would agree with what uh, the pediatricians are staying in, in terms of the lower, what appears to be a lower level of risk uh, from children and, and to children. Uh, however, when we start getting into these higher levels of community transmission that we're seeing now, I feel that we are beginning to enter not fully understood or known territory. And so it is important that we continue to assess carefully and that we very strongly um, follow those mitigation factors, um, strategies uh, to, to reduce risk. Uh, we're talking about um, uh, hi- higher levels of disease in our community. That means that uh, the, the chances of people entering school with disease also goes up. Um, and, and so um, there is some higher risk associated with that. Although I think again, we're still trying to look at balancing um, the benefit that we know children will achieve from being in schools with the risks that, that we're talking about. So um, that's where I've arrived at saying that we need to be sure that we proceed with caution and we take the time uh, to assess between these different stages before we move to the next. Um, that said, um, there was mention of Dr. Furlano and where she is with this. I can tell you from multiple personal discussions with Dr. Furlano, who um, is our lead uh, uh, at the state level that um, she is also very concerned about the risk entering um, that we're entering into with such high rates of community transmission. But she also values the importance of getting children back, back into school. Um, so, um, and, and we, we also um, need to look at other measures that we should be following um, such as under, looking at absenteeism in the school with students and staff. And there is a risk to staff uh, with this that's probably higher, significantly higher than the risk to, to students um, as, as well. Uh, all of those, those are, are factors that, that I think uh, should, should come into play.
Okay, um, thank you, Dr. Lindsay. And you know, you have really answered my question. I don't feel the other doctor that spoke did. I, I specifically said, should we stop monitoring and reporting community transmission? Do you guys feel that there's no longer a need to monitor or be concerned about transmission? In other words, what if we get to fifteen percent positivity or about twenty percent? Or what about a thousand cases per day? So I, and I agree with Dr. Lindsay in that we have to look at everyone. I want our kids back in school. I am a, a former teacher, forty, uh, thirty-eight years, thirty-seven. I want them back in school and I'm concerned about their mental health, but I'm also concerned about our adults' mental health as well.
Okay, okay.
I will say that I don't think uh, that it is as simple as a recipe and we'd almost boil down to having a recipe or formula. Each level requires consideration and thought and we should be thinking of them more as tools as opposed to rote specific numbers, although we have thresholds that may trigger our looking and thinking about certain activities.
Would you agree, Dr. Lindsay, that these are just really-
They're decisions and so they just don't fit into a cookie cutter situation.
I'm sorry, I did not understand that.
I, I was just, I just meant, wouldn't you agree that these are just complex decisions that require a lot of risk and benefit analysis and don't fit into a cookie cutter magical, you know, certain numbers and thresholds exactly?
I agree.
Dr. Lindsay?
I agree that it's, it's a challenging and complex situation. Uh, but I'm also concerned that um, with the limitations of what we're seeing in terms of data that, that we're cautious in, in uh, not overstating um, our assurances as well.
Mrs. Riggs, we're gonna move on, if that's okay?
Yeah, I just, I just want us to really think about the contact tracing and how it's been very delayed. So I think, you know, that's something that we need to keep in, keep in mind as well. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I am late to the meeting. I had a medical emergency and was waiting for my daughter to get out of surgery, so I'm in the parking lot of the hospital right now. But um, anyway, thank you so much. Um, I got on, I think about forty-five minutes late, so I didn't get the chance to see the first of it. But I really do appreciate the doctors and especially, and I'm not sure which doctor this was, cause I'm on my little iPhone. But um, to really make a point that schools are different than the community and the data shows that. Um, I've got a family member, one of my nephews, his full-time job is to trace um, COVID cases. So I called him last week. He said, it's coming, the spread is coming in the community from three places. Bars, gyms, and family get-togethers. I said, what about schools? No, no schools. Um, he's not from here. He's in a really big city, city, um, a few hours away from here. So to me, I mean, the community is going to spread. It's a virus unless everybody, unless no one's gonna go out. People are going out, people are going to bars, people are going to gyms, people are, you know, getting together. Um, but we can't let the children suffer because we continue to make those choices. Or simply because we're in the middle of a really cold flu, you know, spike in the community. To me, it just doesn't seem reasonable to hold our, our students in a less than optimal um, situation for them to learn, um, both academically and um, for also their well-being and, and their health. Um, and I know, I, I do appreciate the mentioning so much of the mental health challenges, addiction, child abuse, um, suicide, um, anxiety. And I know like doc, our doctor said and several board members have said, you know, this just didn't start. That's true. But this virus and this shutdown has hit it over the fence in these areas. I work, as you know, very closely with the opioid working group. For ten years, opioids and addiction with opioids and overdoses has increased, increased, increased. Just about a year ago, year and a half ago, we made a headway and the first time in twelve years was it reduced in Virginia. And guess what happened since COVID? It has skyrocketed back. We lost all the, all the footing that we held. Now, did COVID cost, cause addiction? Heck no. Did COVID, is it causing mental challenges? No. Is it making them ten, twenty, a hundred times worse? You bet. Um, is, did it cause the achievement gap? Is it causing the achievement gap? No. Is it making it ten, twenty, thirty times worse? You bet. And it's our vulnerable populations, our um, poverty, our minorities and our special education kids that are gonna suffer because it is making it worse. Um, so I really do like that I'm hearing and, and what I'm hearing is thumbs up that we need to get, get these kids back in school. That schools are different than the gym, schools are different than the bars, schools are different than being at town center shoulder to shoulder. And we have proceeded with the utmost caution. In fact, more caution than some of us felt comfortable with, but and, and I know that we're gonna continue to do, do so and I, and I applaud that and I applaud the um, the direction that, that we have gone and we are gonna continue to do that with caution. Um, and I just wanna say that I guess this is a Dr. Spence or maybe to ask my colleagues is, Dr. Spence, I know that I'm hearing that, I know you want the kids back in school, the doctors do. Dr. Lindsay even says, you know, with caution. What will it look like? And maybe you said this at the beginning, but uh, do you see a phase in? Um, like can we get K through five back first? Is that what you're thinking? Um, special education and then wait for a little to see how it's going, then, then a hybrid or, or, or phase in our other children? Can we just kinda get your thoughts if you have them now? And, and see if Dr. Lindsay, you know, there was mentioned that, that it's gonna be overpowered with what, you know, the, the Health Department can take. But if we phase this in using our health um, strategies like we have done mitigations, is that something that we're looking at that we can do to try to get at least our younger, our most vulnerable kids in and, and how long and kinda what does that look like?
And Mrs. Williams, I can first add-
Was part of Dr. Lindsay's uh, thought, but um, does administration carry away in at this time or wait till later or?
That, that'd be up to you, Madam Chair. I, I mean, I'm happy to, to speak a little bit about that direct question or-
Please.
Okay.
So, you know, directly to the question, I think what I, what I've tried to do all along is, is uh, be consistent with this, wanting students back in school. Um, I hear the, I heard the presentation, talked at length about that presentation. We've talked about the importance of relying on the data and on the science. Um, I hear the caution that's urged by the Department of Health. And so, you know, trying to weigh all that in balance. I mean, I, what I think we need to do is develop a plan to get kids back. Um, and I think we need to, to do that with some caution. I think we need to uh, look at phasing kids back in. Um, and I think we need to, to, you know, have some time to, to do that and think about, you know, um, how we do that in a way that helps uh, our teachers and our staff feel safe. So one of the things that um, we've done here recently is we've been having some conversations with some teachers about what would you need to feel safe? And we've been talking with um, Mary a little bit about, you know, what her concerns are. And we've been talking uh, just amongst ourselves about other things that we would think that we would need to do in order to be most appropriately cautious and make sure that we weren't, uh, uh, that we are mitigating risk to the extent that we can. Um, you, you've heard that and I do believe, you know, our, our mitigation efforts are good mitigation efforts. Um, so I really, I do believe that. Um, we've heard um, contact tracing being an issue. I think Ms. Riggs just mentioned it and I know we've heard that from some folks in the Health Department and there was an article in the paper about that and so on and so forth. One of the things I think we can do, I think we can train contact tracers. You know, you don't have to be a medical professional. You can be trained to be a contact tracer and have some contact tracers that are directly working for the schools, with the schools. Uh, one of the conversations that we're currently having is with our athletic trainers at CHKD to help us with that. Um, and so that, that's a, like a, an area where I think we could help, right? Where we could partner with the Health Department and, and support Mary's office and have co- uh, contact tracers that can do that work for us to make sure that we've got that assurance. Um, I think, uh, for example, uh, something that um, you all have talked with me about a little bit, like, like people being concerned that something's not, uh, mitigations aren't being appropriately followed in the schools and how do we know and how do we deal with that? And one of the things that um, that we looked at with that was, you know, whether or not an anonymous reporting system would be helpful. Nobody on senior leadership team thinks that would be helpful and I've, I've, I've had that conversation with our team and there's a lot of reasons and I could talk about those reasons. But I think rather than talk about all those reasons, what I'd like to say is I think what would be helpful is a proactive approach. So I was very impressed by something that I saw Fairfax doing and I think Loudon's picked up on it and it's these external safety teams that they have put together. They're using retirees um, and some other folks. Um, and it's a conversation we're having in senior leadership right now about c- could we do it and how fast could we do it? But essentially developed a very clear checklist of look fours around the mitigations and train those external safety teams uh, on that with our, you know, partnering with our health team. Um, and then having them conduct regular checks in our buildings, like uh, you know, those teams like every day out in buildings looking and seeing, are we doing the mitigations, right? And um, so two things about that. One is kind of analogous. I've talked to a few of you, I think, about this. It's analogous to a little bit to what we've done with school security, right? So if you remember school security, kind of prior to the Blue Ribbon Panel, there were uh, there were concerns about you know, people getting into our buildings and being able to walk around without a badge and and so we ramped up our expectations as a part of that Blue Ribbon Panel, right? And in addition to that, we, uh, instead of auditing every three years um, or relying on internal audit to do something with that- um, or relying on internal audit to do something with that, we now audit those schools on an ongoing basis. We have coordinators who are assigned to, to a set of schools, and we're regularly in those buildings, looking at those safety protocols. And what have you noticed? If you go to our buildings? You, you go to our buildings now, you're gonna have to press a button, you're not gonna find an unlocked door, you've gotta talk to the security personnel, they're, who are gonna be right by the front entrance now, and they're gonna be in a, a uniform so that you know who they are. And what you, so, so what you see is, like, if you measure it, it gets done. And so one of the things that I think we are missing and that we need to develop is a measurement tool, that, and a, and a team that can go do it to make sure that what we're saying is happening has to happen. And that's that, uh, I'm speaking a little bit to what Dr. Lindsay said, like, where you get into higher transmission, you have to take more extraordinary steps to make sure that you're being cautious, right? And so I would, I would wanna recommend that we would wanna do that. Um, and um, also would wanna recommend that um, we identify, senior leadership work together to identify who, who, kind of which office that lives in. We've got some ideas, and that somebody could call that office if they had a concern, and they could say, you know, so it isn't an anonymous reporting, it's, "I'm calling about a specific school, and this is what I've seen." Um, and then that safety team could go out and see that, and they could, they could do an audit on, you know, very quickly respond to that and make sure that if something was happening. Or that could be driven by data, right? So if we're seeing a rise in cases in a building, safety team could be in that building, looking at what was going on, first to correct, um, but also just to make sure that um, everything's being done the way it's supposed to be done. So that, I'm, I'm giving you like examples of things that I think we can do to more cautiously get us back to school. Um, and I do think a phased approach is the right approach. Um, s- you know, you sort of saw, you gotta have a plan for doing that. Um, I would argue we would, we would wanna do it similarly to what we've done before. Certainly, I think we have to get special education students back in the building, and I would, I would wanna look at the elementary students first. Um, and use that opportunity to, to then do what Dr. Lindsay has urged tonight, which is to then monitor, and to make sure that in, when you have high community transmission, that we still see the same data that we were seeing when the community transmission was a little bit lower, which is that data that says it's not um, transmission in the schools, that it's not spreading in the schools, that it's coming into the schools from outside, which is what we were seeing before, and what we think we're still seeing, and what we still think they're seeing in Chesapeake, as a for example. Um, is that it's coming into the buildings, and as cases go up in the community, the cases are going up a little bit in the buildings, but the transmission isn't occurring in the buildings, right? Like, the kids aren't giving it to the teachers. Um, so, it, but, but to give the Department of Health time to look at that with us, and all of you and us to assess that data, to make sure it's the right decision, and then um, you know, to, to react to that assessment, and then to begin bringing other students back. So, I mean, that's my sort of long answer to where I think I'm at now, having had this ongoing dialogue uh, with, with our um, health professionals, and uh, honoring kind of the con- concern and cautionary note, um, both of our Health Department, but also I know of some of our teachers that we talked to. Um, we have another follow-up meeting on, on early next week with um, with our t- one of our teacher groups, and, 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 you know, asking them the, the same question, like, "What do you need to feel safer?" And so I think we would continue to seek and ask those questions, to uh, if we got good feedback, to implement that feedback, because we do wanna recognize people don't feel safe. Um, here's my sort of bottom line. I, I don't want people to not feel safe. But there's a difference between feeling safe and being safe, and um, ultimately, as an educator, I gotta get kids back in school. Like, I am really seeing the harm. Uh, I talked about it last week, I, uh, two weeks ago, I'm seeing it in my own house, but I wanna assure you, that's not what's driving me saying this to you tonight. I'm saying it as an educator responsible for the kids in this community. We are seeing the harm, and it isn't just the, the mental health harm, it's real academic harm. Uh, and uh, we are gonna lose a lot of learning, and um, a measurable um, concern about that on my part. And I think on the part of a lot of our educators in the community too, um, and certainly we've heard from many parents about that as well, so. So it's a, it's a tough balance, and it's a really difficult decision, and there's no, we've said every time we meet, there's no right answer here, you, and there's no decision that's not difficult. Um, but, you know, uh, at the end of the day, weighing what I've learned in my evolving learning, because I'm trying to learn too, right? It's like, I don't wanna throw everything out and just say, like, everything we did before doesn't matter, but I do think we have to evolve in our thinking from July, and I think we have to think about what are the other things that we can do to be cautious, to monitor, to make sure we're doing it the right way. Uh, and then, you know, uh, phase other kids in as we know we're doing that. So that's my long answer to uh, probably a shorter question.
Thank you, Douglas.
Yeah, thank you. This is still Carolyn Weems. Um, I appreciate your comments, Dr. Spence. Um, just to ask a question about what you said, and I think you called them, I'm not sure, safety teams that you would send out to the schools, I'm not sure what the name you gave it.
Yes, that's close, close enough.
Does that, um, am I to take that as you are open to perhaps closing a school? Just a school if the transmission is found, that that particular school is, is, the transmission has gotten into the school and is spreading, would you be open just to shut down that school, or two schools, rather than the whole division? Are you open to that?
Yeah, uh, I mean, I'm open to working with the Department of Health on assessing and making that decision, right? Like, so if it seems like it's working, if, if all of our mitigation efforts and our monitoring efforts are working across all schools, but you have a si- you have an outbreak, and, and a reminder, I don't like the word outbreak, but like outbreak uh, under the Health Department is, is basically like two or more interconnected cases, I think, and so. Um, but if, if you were to have that, and the Health Department working with us, and comes in, and we say, "Okay, you know, maybe we need to quarantine this classroom, or maybe we need to close this school," or, um, I think there was a, a question that was brought up about like cust- available custodians at a recent meeting, right? And so, but what if you got into a situation where you had a school where the night crew was out? Uh, and they, they just had to all go out because they weren't wearing their masks, and they weren't doing what they were supposed to do, so you don't have a night crew, and we don't have enough substitutes to go in there and create a night crew? Well, the night crew cleans the building, does the disinfecting, and we would then have to be in that situation of looking at closing maybe that school until we could get staffing into that building, but the, the logic would be, I think, that in that sc- just using that scenario, why would we then close eighty-six schools? If it's working everywhere else, why wouldn't we close A school and keep eighty-five open if we know that's good for kids? Um, and, and if we had to close fifteen schools, would it still make sense? If there wasn't like a pattern to that, like, we weren't doing what we were supposed to do, but it was like isolated things, you know, and then, but then working and thinking with VDH of like, is there a threshold that you get to where? And, and again, I, I don't wanna set thresholds right now, because that's not what the evolving thinking is telling us, but where they come in and say, "We're overburdened, we, even with your contact tracing support, you've got too many things happening in your schools, and we need you to step back." Then that's a conversation we would have to come back and have, like, right then, we'd have to have that conversation, and we'd have to say, "This is what we're hearing from the Health Department." But, but the logic for me right now, that I'm, I'm becoming convinced of, and I, I've read, and you all, you all are getting inundated with reading, I know, lots of people wanna share links for you. Uh, I ignore the opinion pieces, and I go to the science pieces. Uh, and the science pieces, uh, what I'm reading is what you heard tonight from, from Dr. Roland. Uh, is it, it's not transmitting in our schools. And so the risk while there is lower. Uh, even more so, you saw that one very interesting chart, uh, even more so for our elementary kids, it's actually lower than it is out in the community. Um, and, and so if we could kind of understand that and assess that, and maybe think about, we would close A school, or quarantine A classroom, uh, rather than the whole, the whole place right now. I mean, that's where my thinking has got to, my, my whole purpose in all of this has been to get that on the table for us to have this conversation, so that we could really think about this. And um, so, so that's, that's where I'm at. Another long answer, I apologize.
Thank you.
If I could um, add some comments here?
Yes, Dr. Lindsay.
In, in reference to the, the question about safety teams versus school closures, I would say that the purpose of those approaches are very different, and on, are, on, are on different ends of the spectrum. So um, the purpose of a safety team is, Dr. Spence has described it, would be upstream with prevention. We'd be looking at making sure that those mitigation strategies are very strong and tight so that we don't get to the point that we have outbreaks that would involve having decisions around closures. Um, also, if we did have cases, uh, and we're looking at contacts from a public health perspective, we would be looking at trying to um, put um, trying to mitigate or take action as close to that source as possible. Uh, so that could be, uh, in this case, you know, there's a good chance, because we're at three feet, it could be an entire classroom. Uh, but that doesn't mean it's the entire school. If there are cases or evidence of transmission, or multiple cases throughout the school, then we may be looking at or talking about uh, closure of a school, but we would hope that we would not get there. At each level, we would need to be assessing, trying to identify the gaps to prevent advancing to the next level. Um, and so uh, closing an entire school district because of cases uh, in, in this situation that you described, I think would be less likely. Um, unless, you know, we're seeing evidence of widespread risk uh, or, and/or transmission. So just kinda wanted to point that out. Uh, also, regarding the issue of contact tracers, um, I think it is fine if the school uh, wants to build its resources to help support that. But again, I want to point out that contact tracing in the school is just limited to potential exposures in the school. It does not replace a public health still coming in and doing a broader contact tracing around that same case. So it's not a relief for the resources or the actions that public health would need to take around a positive case. And so when it spoke of resources, you know, one of the challenges is that we are at three feet social distancing, so we have much more uh, contact tracing to do around a case in the school than we would if we were at six feet. So that's just a reality of where we are. Um, and as part of this, um, skipping to another top, slightly different topic, as part of the investigations that we're doing, or assessments, I should say, that we're doing, um, I think it's very important that we work a little bit more on standardization around cases and case counts. We feel that as we were looking at this data a little bit more closely, and near the end before, uh, we went to virtual learning, we're starting to see maybe three or four case, cases, in some cases within a building, um, that um, we were not seeing those, but they were kinda reported in, in your accounts. Um, that we will need to make sure that we're standardized in terms of how we're defining cases, and that we have an opportunity to assess those much more closely, to make sure that we're not missing EpiLinks um, that would suggest the potential for transmission. It's not just an issue of identifying uh, those um, as part of our uh, assessment for counts. Uh, it's also important as a prevention strategy in being able to identify, again, potential gaps in the mitigation piece, so that we can strengthen the prevention to keep from getting to the point that we have uh, widespread uh, cases, whether it's in the school or in the co- community. So I just wanted to make those points, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm full of the time, we have Mrs. Holtz and, and myself, and that'll wrap up this session with our doctors. Uh, and a reminder that we have the information session, so Mrs. Holtz?
Yes, ma'am.
So much talk, I've lost my train of thought, however. Um, and in the very last slide, I think uh, Ms. Brown, a PhD, doesn't say where she comes from. The message of community seemed to be to open schools. However, in the other slide earlier on, in the discussion, the, the infection rates, infection rates in community and the schools, you know, is different for elementary and high school. There seems to be agreement that there's low transmission in elementary, but that the hot, middle school and high school mirror the community. So I wonder why we aren't just talking about those two separately, because they are a, a totally different group. Um, and I also want to uh, kinda overlap on some of the things that Ms. Riggs said. Um, the, we have, we are, we are still in the spike from Thanksgiving. We're going to have a Christmas break here, and we know there's gonna be a spike after that. I mean, that's been the pattern since last year, so I think we have to take that in consideration. Um, and I understand about the whole, older kids in high school. And they don't, they're not with their parents, they're out, they socialize, uh, so yeah, they're exposed more. But we have letters from parents, as Ms. Riggs said, uh, "My kids are in sports, my kids go to the mall, they do this, and they don't even wear masks, so why can't they be in school?" But those are the same kids that are bringing, that are going to school and bringing this to other kids and teachers. I'm concerned right now with teachers, because they're in that age group that is the fastest rising group that has been getting this virus. You know, at that thirty, thir- I think they say third, uh, twenty-five to forty, but then the third group is up to fifty years of age. So I am concerned about that also. And I wonder, um, I, I certainly don't feel like these kids should be back to school, at least until the end of January, perhaps until the end of the first semester. Um, the community is not cooperating fully. I think when they do, the faster they do, the faster their kids can get back to school, and teachers too. You know, my daughter just texted me, she said, "We have four doctors here. Dr. Rollin, Dr. Best, Dr. Mitchell, Dr. Lindsay." She wants to know from all four of them, is it safe for her middle school, are you saying? Is it safe for her middle school son to go back to school? I think I did hear Dr. Mitchell say yes. Okay, excuse me. Are, are you telling my daughter yes? And I mean, all the daughters around here.
I think, I think to, to several of your points, I think we have a great opportunity in school setting to teach and monitor the behaviors that we know that work. What's happening right now with the scenarios that y'all have described is the, those behaviors that know, we know work are not being modeled because they're not attending school. It's, it's the wild, wild west out there if they're not in school. So we have the opportunity to teach those behaviors, model those behaviors, and show that they work. We know in the healthcare setting that this and the eyewear is enough. Uh, a great example, it was in the press, and so I can, I can talk about it. University of Virginia had a child that had, was admitted, uh, severe car accident, severely ill, tested negative at time of arrival, not a bad test, wasn't positive. Four days later, family member was positive, the child was positive, alright? So they did the standard stuff, they didn't do all the fancy hazmat suits that you see on the news. They did the standard stuff like I do in my office, with the eyewear and the regular mask in that child until that child was a hundred and seventy. Staff member had cared for that child, intubation, all of the stuff we talk about that's really high risk for spread. No one got it. Okay, that's the point. So if we do the right things, we model the right behaviors, stick to those mitigating factors, they help, they work. Is it a hundred percent? No. But we have an opportunity to model and teach our community by using the schools to do that.
Alright, thank you.
So if I, if I may sneak in this question, uh, that's related. Just throwing it out there for Dr. Lindsay and one of the others of you three, what would be your recommendation in terms of with the winter break that Mrs. Holtz mentioned? Of a, what's the prudent amount of time to, with anticipating a possible rise? Any thoughts on that, anybody? Because we see what some of- Um, any thoughts on that, anybody? Cuz we see what some of the other regional districts are recently, uh. Con- you know, they're making decisions in that regard. Do you have any particular advice for us for us and the superintendent to weigh on that? Dr. Lindsay, do you wanna weigh in?
I I missed part of the question.
Okay, with regard to with regard to winter break, if the school board and administration were to consider a phase in at some point in January, for example. Is there a time a a waiting period you would recommend following w- winter break?
So let me start with part of what, uh, I believe, um, the initial person speaking raised. Before, uh, the relative risk for her middle schooler.
Well, I I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are now two minutes past.
Time, so if we could hold that thought till later and address this point.
All right, so I I don't have a definite answer regarding uh whether or not you should wait, for example. An incubation period, which would be about fourteen days after the holidays to start. Because the students could very well be. And families be engaged in the same activities that they were during the holidays, so that would not necessarily reduce the risk. So I think it depends on whether or not you believe giving them that break, if they would really truly. Somewhat self-quarantine, and I'm not sure that that's really clear. Uh, what I do think would be important is, as you move through these phases, that. Uh, I would recommend that we start with the the very young, because I believe that they are lower risk. Um, and those who are are indeed of special learning. And before advancing to the next level, allow two to four weeks. I would like to have as much as three to four weeks to have an opportunity to see the impact. In the schools, but a minimum of two weeks before advancing to the next level.
Just wanna just address that point.
I think that point about, you know, that's where we can. Look at what happened after Thanksgiving other places and just use that to inform our decision-making. I mean, I agree with Dr. Lindsay as far as the um. Uh, waiting a bit of the incubation period, hoping that if we have our kids in a robust virtual learning platform, that they are not out. Gallivanting around, I. I think she makes a good point, not knowing if people will actually adhere to that or not. It's sort of a little bit of a guessing game, if they're just gonna extend their vacation, or they're actually gonna. You know, what benefit are we gonna gain from that? Um, but I would encourage us, the data's pretty good to say, and we've already brought these elementary kids back. I would, I would say I'd really like to to see you try to get the pre-K through six back as a group. Maybe even pre-K through five, if you feel you can't, but the sixth graders too, if if you can do that first and then. You know, go from there, but this is really for Dr. Spence to to discuss in more detail later, operational issue, but. I would say that the sooner the better, and looking at elementary as a group, cuz a lot of the studies have looked at those. You know, twelve and under ten, especially in under.
Thank you. And Dr. Lindsay, if you could sum- summarize for Mrs. Holtz your remaining statement, and then we'll be concluding this portion. Dr. Lindsay? Okay.
Sorry, I was just, I was on mute.
Okay, we.
I was just.
I believe if you could just take another, just a short moment or two to to wrap up.
Because we do need to convene and uh to prepare for our formal meeting.
Well, I'll just limit my comments to um this particular area. I I do, I feel that there is a higher risk. Uh, with middle or high school students. A mitigation, again, is very important. I think some things that we have not touched on, uh, that was raised is the importance of strong communication. Uh, with families about mitigation around home and ensuring that we uh prioritize. In learning above extracurric- curricular activities uh as as well.
Okay.
Thank all you physicians very much for spending time with us again today. We're having an additional uh. St- staff updates as part of our information session and the formal meeting. Anything to add to that, Dr. Spence, at this time? Okay, so we will be reconvening for formal meeting at six o'clock. This workshop is adjourned. Thank you all.